First of all, I'm going to say a couple of things now because otherwise my back will be to everybody and that's rude. So I want to especially thank everybody for coming this evening and I thank our new town manager and Solicitor Goram and our town council for giving us this opportunity to probably clear up some misinformation and misconceptions and give you a better picture of what Celebrate Coventry is all about. And thanks in particular to Norma Smith who set this entire PowerPoint up and obviously I couldn't do it without her. So thank you, Norma, and thank you for... There's probably 80% of this audience is made up of Celebrate Coventry's committee tonight. So I want to thank everybody for coming out and obviously the rest of you who are here because you want to know what's going on. So we'll get started. The way this all started was back in probably the spring of 2014. Norma and Sandy LeBoutz came to me and said, "The town Coventry is going to have a 275th anniversary again in the year 2016." So we talked about it, looked up, couldn't pronounce the word, it's got lots of fuses in it. And we talked about what can we do to celebrate 275th anniversary? So we got organized, we had some community garden people who volunteered to help us with it. It's about actually bending too many arms. And we thought we would do fundraising in 2015 and then have a town reenacted at the first town council meeting. But along the way, as our late great Tyler Fay pointed out, nobody was really interested in 275 years, what they really liked was 250 and 300. So we put our thinking caps back on and we came up with Celebrate Coventry and not just be specific, one tent and one celebration. So we have a mission statement and our mission is to act as a community to bring together residents, businesses, and visitors to Coventry so they may enjoy the rich history, culture, natural beauty, and outdoor recreational areas that make up our beautiful town. And we want to have concerts, festivals, arts, and educational events showcasing the spirit of Coventry. But most importantly, I think to all of us, is that we are a non-political and non-partisan, all-volunteer group. Everyone's welcome, you don't have to do a formal to be on the committee, you just want to celebrate our town. What is celebrating? It's to do something special, for an event, an occasion, a holiday, praising someone or something about your town. And I think part of the issue is, we get a lot of bad press. We've had some really, really bad press the last couple of years because of the fire station, the fire car accident situations, and a few other things. And we really wanted to give the town, the people who live here, a reason to understand how really good our town is. And we are the largest town in Rhode Island, we have 65 square miles, and we originally repurchased from the Marigans and Indian tribe. We have a lot of history, we have a lot of things that families and adults alike can enjoy in Coventry. These photos are courtesy of Frank Race, a very well-known photographer in southern New England. The building on the left everyone recognizes is the Payne House Museum, which is the location of the first town council meeting in 1741. The house on the right is the Daniel Green homestead, which everyone knows who Daniel Green is. Coventry is known to many as the biggest town in the smallest state. Coventry is not only Rhode Island's largest town and land area, but also its greenest. Some people enjoy the green of Parker Woodland, the natural maze properties of the Orban Society Woodlands, filled with lush forests, fields, and trails. Others prefer to take to our waterways with their kayak or canoe. George Washington, second-in-command, General Nathaniel Greene, was from Coventry and you can still see his restored homestead, a step into the past. There is much to see for the history of such as the Rees Schoolhouse built in 1831, historic cemeteries, and architectural ruins. The area has numerous stowwales and also boasts colonial homes, village churches, and green gardens. We have a national historic trail, national historic districts, and many historic houses on the National Historic Historic Place, all under the National Parks Service. Coventry Greenway, the railroad to the Aggie Quaker, or the walkway that lets you take a stroll through the natural atmosphere for the equestrian, and it's the only path that combines bikes and horses in the state. Firepoint on Lake Tioke is perfect for a laser beam swimming away on a summer day. Those looking to spend a little green might want to visit the Center of the Linglin Complex, which contains restaurants, shopping, and three inns. You can also banish your walk into town to the Tioke Avenue, St. Rodan Road, and Washington Village for more shopping and restaurants. The National Major Nathaniel Greene was a major-general of the Continental Army in the American Revolutionary War, known for his successful campaign in the Southern Campaign, forcing British Lieutenant General Charles Cornwallis to abandon the Carolinas and head for Virginia. When the war began, Greene was a Muscia private, the lowest rank possible. He emerged from the war with a reputation as George Washington's most gifted and dependable officer. Many places in the United States are named for him, Greene suffered financial difficulties in the post-war years and died in 1780. Tourism is an important part of any town and I don't think personally that we really wish tourism enough here. What is tourism? It's the practice of traveling for recreation, but how far do we have to go? You don't really have to go very far when you live in Coventry. And as the next few slides will show you, we've got everything, as we said, from recreation to historical areas that can be visited by local people and visitors. These photos are also done by Frank Race. The upper left is the Arc Right Bridge, which was closed a few years ago. The one on the right is the Interlaken Bridge. Both bridges are on the National Register of Historic Places. The bottom left is the Harris Fiber Station. There are five national historic districts in the town and most people aren't even aware of the history that we have there. The Anthony Village District was established just a few short years ago, it's the largest one in the town. The Carbuncle Hill Archaeological District is in Greene, Hopkins, Powhatan, Roanoke, Rice City are also in Greene. South Nam Street Historic District is right here in Washington Village. There are 14 historic structures listed on the National Register. The Tuxit Valley Dying Company, we've seen Winslow, Wilson Winslow House, Henry Fox Farm, Arc Right Bridge, Harris Mill, Isaac Bowen House, Waterman Tavern, Musup River Site, Christopher Rhodes Green House, William Waterman House, Interlaken Mill Bridge, Payne House, General Nathaniel Greene Homestead, and Joseph Briggs House, which was also the Coventry Town Farm. We also have a part of the WPR National Historic Trail that runs through Coventry and is the only historic trail east of the city. In 1781, General Rochambeau's friend Johnny Dory forced the General Washington's Continental Army to fight the British Army in North County, Virginia, with the French Army and support the Allied army who, hundreds of miles, become the largest troop movement of the American Revolution. In 1780, a squadron of French warships and transports delivered some 5,500 men of the French Expeditionary Force at Newport, Rhode Island. In 1781, the troops were transported by road to Providence in camp there for several days before marching west to camp in Coventry at Waterman Tavern and then to march west to Connecticut to join the West Continentals near the Oscar in New York. These pictures were painted by artist David Wagner. On the left is his rendition of Waterman Tavern at the time of the march and on the right is his rendition of the encampment site that was across from Waterman Tavern. Waterman Tavern is located on Maple Valley Road. The Tuxit River is also available in our town, there are two branches in the town. It is available for education, recreation, protection, and heritage. The area around the river was occupied by members of the Tuxit tribe who were part of a larger Marigansic tribe. In the native language, the word "Tuxit" means "their fall." The river was primary transportation for the settlers in the 1600s and the energy source of saw and rivers. The Tuxit River Valley played an important role in the early development of the textile industry during the 19th century. And there are two branches, it is a natural resource, we should be proud of and utilize it, it has been over the centuries. These are photos of both branches of the Tuxit Valley, Tuxit River Bridge. The one on the top left is Arc Right, the center top is Quidnick. The top left is the south branch during this flood of 2010 in Washington Village. The left bottom is also the Washington Bridge, not at flood stage. The center bottom is Arc Right and the bottom right is also Quidnick. The mills. The Anthony Mill was one of the most architecturally elaborate mills in the state of Rhode Island, currently listed on the National Register of Historic Places. The Anthony Mill has recently been renovated in the lost apartments by Brady Silver Properties. The Harris Mill, built in 1850, the mill was the second of two textile mills developed by Elijah Harris, a former governor of Rhode Island. The Harris Mill has recently also been renovated into a property. This is, these are photos of the mill, there are two mills as they are today. The left is Anthony, the center photos is also the interior end of Anthony Mill. The right is Harris Mill and one photo of inside of Harris Mill. The railroad to the Greenway, the path follows the former rail corridor for much, for more than half of the length, the path was parallel to the Tuxit River. Small hole access is as possible at several points, but normally we won't do it. The trail also features an equestrian trail, snow and winter activities along the Greenway, includes snow shenin and cross country skating. The four photos on each side are construction photos of the Quidnick Trestle. Of course, the center bottom is the Greenway as it is today. This is also similar, just said about the Greenway. It's the longest bike path, 19 miles from Prankston Street and Prankston to La Bree Road. It's named for the abandoned rail corridor once served for the Providence Hotchard Fishkill Railroad. Two more contracts on the United Field Day rehabilitate old rail bridges and complete the path west toward the American Corridor. When finished, it will be a 24-mile ride from one end to the other. And that's a map of the Greenway. There is a historic cemetery restoration project that's ongoing in the Manchester and Pine Grove Cemeteries. It is being done by the Tuxit Valley Preservation and Historic Cemeteries Commission. They've taken a particular interest in both kind of the Manchester and St. John who left it. What was once overgrown and victims to vandalism are now attributed to the memories of our residents of the past. There are more than 100 historic cemeteries in the town of Rhode Island. So as you can see, we have a lot of history that we can celebrate in the town, but we also have things for people who may not really want to look at the history of the town. We've got fantastic national resources and recreation, Carbuncle Pond, Waterman Pond. We have, well, a couple of years old now, national base wildlife refuge. There are boat launches and there are canoe launches that people can use these waterways and have family time on them or just recreational time on them. And as you can see, we have Johnson Pond, Carbuncle, you can swim in Carbuncle, and Firepoint, and the famous Johnson's Pond fireworks for 4th of July. Now, everybody knows that Parks and Rec is probably the best Parks and Rec department in the state. And we have wonderful baseball, football, soccer fields, we have neighborhood playgrounds, and we are very excited as a committee that, beginning with Tyler Fay and now continuing with Jay Crimiano, Jason Luchardi, and Abby Clemental, we have a friendship and we have working relationship with Parks and Rec. And this summer, they will be presenting in, with us, their Summer 2016 Music Concert Series across the street at the Annex. The community garden's also across the street at the Annex and as we know, it's been a wonderful source of food for people over the past few years and the volunteers who work there are constantly coming up with new ways to plant and grow more for the people in our town. This past October, we were fortunate to have someone in New Zealand, visitors, including the Lord Mayor and his wife. They were here in October, we had a wonderful breakfast for them and they went on a very fun time on tour with Norma to Hampshire. So we have other towns in other countries that we'd like to expand our sister cities and I think through Celebrate Coventry could do that. Now, why the Art Park Pavilion, you ask? Well, mostly because most New England towns, if you close your eyes, you picture this town green with a gazebo. Where's Coventry's? Oh wait, there it is, it's across the street. And thanks to Coventry Lumber, RT News, Consolidated Concrete, Miller Electric, and Trust Construction, we now have a wonderful white music pavilion that we're going to be using for concerts, craft fairs, community events, theatrical and educational programs. And also, it was really exciting for us when Trust Construction agreed to build it for us. They have the Coventry High School, O-Tech Coventry students building it with them. We're very proud of that partnership with schools, too. Thanks again to our Parks and Rec director and his staff. The land area across the street at the Annex will now be completely devoted to the park and the URI master gardeners and a professional designer are developing and planning their garden. So over the next summer, we'll probably decide that, that Tebow Field will be transformed into an art park, peace garden, and we're going to have a liberty tree memorial there also. So where do we go from here? Well, we'd like to invite everybody to town and bring your friends, call your friends in Massachusetts and Connecticut and wherever they live, and come to our wonderful affairs that we're having this summer. Including, we're going to be doing our second annual Classic Car Show on August 13. We have the Ribbing Cutting Forum Pavilion and a sip and mingle wine tasting on June 18. And the concert series will start July 3rd through 29th of August. Also proposed are Sibukala, a powwow of the Marigans and Indians, and a reenactment of the first town, whoops, not Marigans. Quidnick Island, Indians, sorry. And a proposed International Day of Peace. And we have more, you know, ideas for creating three-in-stating memorial game break, a fire and ice festival during the winter, and maybe a river blow and rope duck race. Now, we are hoping that Coventry will bring together residents and businesses and offer a variety of experiences, as we said before. We want to create an economic engine to bring revenue to Coventry through the hotel and meal taxes and we want to grow our annual events to draw tourists and residents alike. We want to create a healthy small business economy and we're hoping that with our partnerships with the Central Dialing Chamber of Commerce and South County Tourism Council, we will be able to do so. We're also very excited that we are partnering with Roger Williams University, Johnson and Wales, and URI to brand and implement sustainable public relations programs for now and into the future. As you can see, we are also proud of the fact we have one of the five career tech schools in Rhode Island and as I said, the Coventry construction crew came over and helped to build the pavilion. And I'd like to introduce Buddy Pilot, who is our diplomatic and central dialing, Jayworth Partners.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you council members for having me here, some of you know me. I just wanted to say, before I begin my presentation, I've been backing up with Norma on this and it's one of the best, and I'll use your words, economic engines to bring growth to a town that I've seen and I've been in a lot of towns, so I think this is a great start for you. Just a little history, in 2010, Tuxit Valley Chamber of Commerce closed and the United States Chamber of Commerce designated the Central Rhode Island Chamber of Commerce, which is located in Warwick, as Coventry's chamber. To that end, I've been coming down quite a bit, trying to get more people to join our chamber, but also we help people who aren't chamber members. We try to develop partnerships and different economic ideas for Coventry. We did do a Coventry Shock Day, we also did a Small Business Saturday. I also have here, which I will pass out to you, my only draft copy. We have started on the chamber level, a new residence guide. So everything that's here will be given to, for free, to the community so that you know where to go, when to go, who to call, when you need something. So it's something we are developing, we need help from Coventry and we hope that, you know, we will have a partnership and we are a partnership. We can help you, but you all have to help us too. We need everyone's input into the chamber. I do have, in my possession, anyone who would like to come to a chamber event, either a business after hours or a luncheon, you can come as my guest and see what we're all about. And I will give some to council members if you'd like to join us for one of our events. We are going behind the scenes for Tuckit Red Sox on March 1st. So if anyone would like to come to that, you can come as my guest, please come and see me afterwards and I will give you a pass for that. Again, like I said, we are a partnership, we would love to see more entrepreneurs, private businesses, large corporations join the chamber, join the committee. We do have four commitments from some major businesses in Coventry that are planning to join the committee. They're very excited about it, they are giving out the PowerPoint presentation, they're very excited. There's a lot of things going on in Coventry that even residents don't know. So I think that there is a way, if you come to the events, you talk to people, the chamber will put everything in there on our website, our Facebook, we tweet everything out to everybody as it's happening. You can bring more business into Coventry, that will lower your tax rate, it will make your homes worth more money because your school districts will be now funded properly and you can do more things. And it is, it's a circle, so everything that, what they're doing up here in front is for everyone's benefit. I applaud them, it was great to hear you had a great economic audit, so that was really great. We do have some things that are open to the public. We have a 5K race that's funded by the CBS. If any of you are members of a nonprofit and you join the chamber, last year we gave almost $5,000 to each nonprofit who came to the 5K. We also do movies in the park and that's free for everyone, bring everyone along. We're also willing to help people, help you here to do your own movies in the park and we also will help you with the farmers market. So if you have any questions or any concerns with the chamber, please feel free to ask me, but we're always happy to serve on the committees. Thank you.
Coventry is part of the South County Tourism Council, I found that out through the Tuxit Chamber of Commerce a few years ago. A lot of people aren't aware of that, because most people, they know South County as beaches, but as they say, Coventry is part of that. So there are a number of towns that comprise it and one Coventry is one. And at present, there are two people that represent Coventry on the board of directors. There are plenty of amazing attractions across South County region to suit everyone's tastes, including Coventry, whether you're interested in getting up close to animals, exploring museums, finding historical landmarks, or getting back to nature. There are plenty of things that Coventry vacation staycation has to offer. Coventry is a great place for family home getaways, is something to delight every family member. We turn to similar turns at a farm, go to Hot Air Bones, ride a horse, visit a water park, learn about wildlife, or attend a festival. Their Southern Rhode Island vacation will become great memories for their kids, so a lot of that is the South County. As you can see, we've got some wonderful business partners and the business partners have purchased our street banners, which we finally have permission to put up. So tonight, you are going to see the first business banner. Nobody's seen them yet, so this is it, we're premiering them this evening and they will be going up shortly with the help of Mr. Nicky and DPW and the Cherry Picker. And I promise I won't drive it, I'll just stand there and look at it. Okay, good. So we're very excited because these are going to look wonderful and they're going to go throughout town and the businesses have decided where they want them, maybe a competitor, maybe a competitor business, so that's kind of fun. So we have some wonderful businesses that are helping us out. We also have partnerships, as you can see, I won't read them all, but you can see our wonderful partners that are part of, from Roger Williams to South Perry to URI Master Gardeners. Now, I'd just like to briefly introduce, we do have Professor Johnson here from Roger Williams. We have Anderson, where is he?
He's over there.
Oh, he's over there. And we have Michelle, no, Melissa, Melissa, sorry. Did you have anything to say?
Good evening, everyone, my name's Anderson.
My name's Melissa McGinn, I'm a junior at Roger Williams.
I'm a senior at Roger Williams.
And first off, we want to say that we're so honored to be working with you guys in such a wonderful town and community.
Yeah, absolutely, so basically just to inform you a little bit about our project, we're taking a media relations class, learning how to properly pitch positive news stories and how to respond to potentially negative news stories to the media. And our professor, Hugh Johnson, was great enough to allow us to work with a great organization like Celebrate Coventry. So we're really excited to use this as a potential experience for us as a student, be graduated senior. I know it's going to be quite important to look for a job, I'm sure Melissa is the same way.
I still have another year, but a lot of the stuff that we are doing in class is not just classwork, we're working with Coventry Women, we're working with different media platforms, different newspapers and television shows just to try and pitch our stories at, will you highlight the amazing assets that you guys have in your town, like the businesses, the museum pavilion, or the rich history that you guys have too?
Yep, so we'll be working on this throughout the semester. I believe if anyone has any sort of ideas for anything we can use, recommend, probably the hand would be the best, we'd be more than happy to talk to you after the meeting itself or anytime, any point in time.
And we also just have a hand up, just briefly describing what we're doing and if any of you guys have Twitter, definitely follow us to kind of see the progress and just...
Yeah, the handle is Brand Coventry, R, R.
I'll pass them out, but thank you so much for your time, we really appreciate it.
And we do have civic support from dental departments all the way to western Coventry and we're very proud of the ROTC, they helped us greatly on Halloween. And I know that the library is excited about Thursday across the street and we've already had help from the police department, so we do have a lot of civic support also. And then is our board and our members and I want to say thank you for your time and I would really like to thank everybody that came in tonight to listen and if you have any questions, let me know. Our next meeting is Monday, the 29th, 7 o'clock, Westwood Estates. Everybody's invited and no, we won't do a huge test right away, we'll kind of ease you into it. And here's our staycation. Now, you can stay in Coventry and have a wonderful time this summer or you can spend thousands of dollars and go to Disney World, whether you're two or either two. Thank you. Thank you.
Mr. President, I just, I'd like to thank the Anderson and Alyssa and Professor Johnson, because I know how important it is to have these types of interaction with real-life experiences, and I also know how time, how invested time you get with them, so thank you, nice job, everybody. Norma?
Yes. I'd just like to say, nice presentation, very impressive program book, and it's been a lot of work, and thank you for coming out tonight and making the presentation to the Town, the Town Council. I think what, maybe it's a good idea to take a five-minute break before we go right into our 7:30 regular Town Council meeting. So why don't we do that, five or six minutes, in case anyone has to stretch their legs or, or anything else. We'll be back.